I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Councilwoman Godbout. President, Councilman Hersberg here. Councilman Hornbuckle here. Councilman McDermott present. Councilwoman Sampee present. Pro Tem Markowski present. Council President Hart is absent, excused. There is a forum, a forum is present.
Thank you. Before we start with our special presentations this evening, I'd like to make an administrative note to your agenda. We will be moving Consent Calendar Item G to New Business 1A. Thank you. Okay. This evening, we're joined by Representative Coleman, who has an announcement.
Well, thank you, City Council. It's always good to be here. Appreciate you giving me just a minute of your time. State Representative Kevin Coleman, I'm just here to invite all of you to our monthly coffee hour. We're going to have this the second Monday of every month, along with Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. It's at Homestead Kitchen on Wayne Road, which is right near Carlos Mexican Restaurant, kind of by the old art van, right on North Wayne Road, between Warren and Joy Road over there. We do that the second Monday of the month. It's October 9th, so this coming Monday, when you see this on TV, 9:00 AM at Homestead Kitchen. And then I saw that there was 5.5 million coming in federal grants for our fire department to help with staffing. Combining that with the 7 million that my office secured for the fire department this year, that's over 12 million for our firefighters. That's excellent news. Just want to say congratulations to the city on that. Fire Department, we absolutely have to support them. I know they were short on staffing, and this is going to be a great boost for them. And I was very proud to help secure the bulk of that funding. And I just want to say, you know, in my opinion, hopefully, the police department's next. We certainly got to support public safety. And then, over the weekend, I was able to go to the very last mass at St. Simon and Jude Church. That's been part of our community for 64 years now. And so, it was a sad day to say goodbye, to see one of our bigger parishes close. So, I was there to support, but also to give hope to the people that are sad and going to have to find a new church. So, we're looking at other parishes in the area to help them find new churches. And then, I just want to give out my office phone number, 517-373-2275. My email, kevincoleman@house.mi.gov. And then, of course, I always give out my cell phone number. Give me a call anytime, 734-751-6321. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. At this time, we're going to move to comments from the public on agenda items. This section allows for a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on our business agenda. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, or other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed, or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever is first. Thank you for letting me read that very long paragraph. All right. We'll start with those on my right. Anyone? We'll start with behind you, Ray.
Oh, okay. I'm just checking on some.
Well, I'll get a turn.
Good evening. Emily Baumann, resident and actually, City Council candidate. My questions are on, a couple of them, so Consent Items C. I was curious why, it mentioned the copy of the RFP. I saw that it was opened on September 21st, and I realize that the RFPs are put into the newspaper for people to see, but as someone who wouldn't be bidding on this, I guess I'm curious why the RFP would not have been in the documentation for the residents to see. And it just felt like it was inconsistent with other things that I've seen, when the evaluation's made as far as who's going to get the bid, there's been some other things that have this evaluation. So, my question is, why does it seem inconsistent? Why couldn't we have the RFP, so we can see what are they actually bidding on? That's a very large amount, and even made reference to the fact that it's such a large project, that there's a 10% increase over the bid amount to cover kind of the, you know, the possibility of something. So, I guess I want, you know, it just opened on September 21st, so to have it on the consent calendar seems really fast also. So, just, that's a question on that one. On D, when are comparisons made in renewal process for anything that's going on in the administration? When you have something, I see the value of maintaining one contractor for the same thing, for certain things, but when do they go out for, like, okay, let's evaluate this? I think there's a little bit of question, like, when, you know, I know that it went up a little bit and all this kind of stuff, but when do we look and see if there may be someone else that provides better service even? And then, on E, I noticed that that was also provided, that the bid, or the dollar amount for the vehicles, was put through on September 25th. And in the budget, it said that there would be about 980,000 for vehicles for the Department of Public Services, however, or, I may get that, the name of the term wrong, but for that, it was 980,000. It looks like with this particular purchases, we're actually over a million dollars, and I think like 80,000 over that 980,000. So, my question is, just because it's put through the budget, where's the evaluation to determine, okay, yes, these vehicles need to be repaired, you know, where's that information? And that evaluation done, so that we can see that, yes, because we're told that when you put something through the budget, there's a secondary review before we actually spend the money. And then, the last question I have is actually on New Business, oh, the last one, for the nominations. I was just curious what the process is for nominating, and maybe you'll explain that a little bit later, but, and who are the nominees? Because there were no names on this, so it's no, like, who are the nominees for that delegation? And how is that process? So, those are my questions.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone on my left, speaking on the agenda? No. Coming back to the right.
Hello. Edward Pruitt here. I am thankful to be in front of you all today. I will be speaking specifically on Agenda Item C and Agenda Item E. As you all know, we, every City Council, I put out a questionnaire to the community, and it's to intentionally reach out to community members, so that they can be involved in this governmental process. We had nine respondents, so that's so amazing, that nine more people want to be involved in the workings of the government. In these, I'm specifically going to be speaking to these two, because these had the most comments. C for the bidding for the roof, the results were 44.4% yes, 33.3% no, 22.2 needs more information. E, the approval of three Chevy Silverados, 77.8% said no, 11.1 said yes, 11.1 said needs more improvement. When we look at the comments that were made, one community member said, "Why do we need more expensive trucks when we have good equipment already? Just ordered new Ford trucks. Why not stay with Ford, stop switching multiple brands?" Another, "Why is the court financing a balance within, with the city yet to be determined interest rate?" And then, a question, "The court has tapped out for 200K." And then, "Until we have the financing in order, this vote should be delayed. There is not enough information provided to justify more truck purchases." So, in regards to those, my personal comments, first thing, if anyone wants to see the full results, they can go to my page, Edward Pruitt III for Westland City Council. But in regards to this specifically, we have an amount to be financed, and in that financing, it has yet to be determined who's going to finance it, what the percentage rate is, so on and so forth. I think that it's best to delay it until we find out all of the information, so that you can make a sound decision. As far as E goes, we've had over a million dollars that, over three council sessions, that's been approved. I know it's in the budget, so on and so forth, but you have a second way of checking it. And I don't believe the questions have been asked to know, especially to the public, what vehicles are having an issue? How can we resolve it? How will it play a part over the long run? And lastly, Item G, I fully support it, but I'm concerned that the public wasn't made aware of it to have enough time to view it. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I will ask, no one on my left, Ray?
I know that was mentioned about G. Well, let's talk about it. I think your resolution was in the New Business, right, or something?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, let's talk about that. Reason why it's, to me, is important, because years ago, it wasn't like it is today. Better supports. They have step out there doing great things. People are working at thrift stores. People are working in the community. People, I work at Community Living Services, and I'm very proud of what I'm working for, and I represent, as a peer mentor, going on. This is my anniversary, 11 years, and I'm ready to go to another year. I love what I do. So, I, just, well, hopefully, that, you know, we man this thing, because it's important. We need to have this. It means everyone. That means people with disabilities have the right to work, have the right to be treated with dignity and respect, inclusion. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Is there any other comments on tonight's agenda? Any other comments on tonight's agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent calendar. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
Some.
We have a motion from Councilman Hersberg. Is there a second?
Support.
Okay. I have support from Councilman Delano Hornbuckle. Okay. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Okay. Seeing no changes. Do we have to roll?
Any dissent.
Any dissent? Any dissent? Okay. Seeing no dissent?
Unanimously.
Unanimously carried.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items.
Minutes of the study session held September 16, 2023. Minutes of the regular meeting held September 18, 2023. Approval of bid for professional services related to the complete restoration of the existing roofing system at the 18th District Court to the low bidder, Lutz Roofing, in an amount not to exceed $548,000. The mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of annual Zix Protect's Essential Email Filtering Software subscription through CDWG in the amount of $5,900. Approval of purchase of three 2024 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 pickup trucks for the Department of Public Service. Amount $51,035.85 per vehicle. Last item approved on the consent calendar today, adoption of prepared land division resolution 6225 Arthur. West side of Arthur, between Yale and Hunter. This was planning department number 2260, and the land division was approved by City Council August 21, 2023. Moving to payment of vouchers.
Is there a motion?
Some. Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Sampee and support by Councilmember McDermott. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Make it to my side. Your mic, um, your discussion? Okay. Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent? Unanimously carried.
Moving to New Business. Item 1, nomination of delegate to the Annual Michigan Municipal League Convention to be held October 18 through October 20, 2023, at the Grand Traverse Resort in Traverse City.
Are there any nominations?
Yes, I have one.
Okay. Councilman McDermott.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem, or tonight, Council President. I'd like to nominate our colleague, who's currently been our representative in MML, Councilman Jim Godbout.
Okay. So, we have a nomination for Councilmember Godbout. Any other nominations?
Yeah, I would like to nominate Kylie Melissa Sampey.
Okay. So, we have a nomination for Councilmember Sampey.
Motion to close nominations.
There's a motion to close nominations. Is there support?
Support.
So, I have a motion to close nominations from Councilmember Hersberg and support from Councilwoman Sampey. Did I just, that just passes, right?
Ask for dissent.
I have to ask for dissent? Okay. I'm sorry. I don't run nominations usually. Is there any dissent? Is there any dissent? Seeing no dissent, nominations are closed.
Designation of delegate to the Annual Michigan Municipal League Convention. We did have two names, two individuals from council that were nominated, Councilman James Godbout and Councilwoman Melissa Sampey. And according to our rules, the names will be identified on a slip of paper, placed in a beautiful box, shaken up, withdrawn one at a time, and voted in that order. Anybody not aware of that or not understand that?
No, unreadiness.
All right. So, I'm going to write two names.
This is very high-tech.
I have two names, Jim Godbout, Melissa Sampey, individual three-by-five sheets of paper. I'm going to toss them into this beautiful box my wife does not know that I have. Isn't it pretty?
It is pretty. You're going to be in trouble.
And I will, I will draw them out one at a time.
Okay.
I think. Wow. They must be sticking to the bottom, and I don't want to look at them.
Maybe we should have our city attorney help us.
First name, Melissa Sampey.
Melissa Sampey.
And because we are going in order, obviously, the second name is Jim Godbout. So, Madam President, at this point, you would want to conduct the vote in order of the two, and so, the first vote in the positive would be to confirm, or not, Melissa Sampey.
Okay. So, at this time, we'll have the votes cast as per the clerk said, and the affirmative for support, and the negative for no support for Melissa Sampey. And Clerk, can we please have roll call?
Councilman Godbout. Councilman Hersberg. For Melissa, thank you. Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
No.
Councilwoman Sampey.
Yes.
Pro Tem Markowski.
Yes.
It's 3-3. Seeing that there was not sufficient votes, we will go to the next name on the list.
Okay.
This roll call will be for?
Councilmember Godbout.
Councilman Godbout. Give me just one second, please. All right. Again, this one is for Councilwoman Melissa Sampey. Councilman Godbout.
This is for Godbout.
No, this is for Godbout.
I got my slips.
You even have it in your hand.
I do. I do. This is for positive or not for Councilman Jim Godbout. Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
No.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampey.
No.
Pro Tem Markowski.
No.
Well, well, well. The way that your rules read, unless I am mistaken, and the city attorney can back me up, this goes to the next meeting.
Okay. Is that correct?
I don't think it's in our council policies or procedures, but that's the district that I was thinking about, would be tabled in the next meeting.
I think there really needs to be a point of consideration made, that the date is, you know, fast approaching, and that if we delay this vote, we won't be able to send our delegate to information to MML in a timely fashion, or secure, you know, the appropriate travel accommodations for that, for either individual. So, I would like to suspend our policies and revote. Do I need to ask for a motion for that support?
If you're going to suspend rules, I say yes.
Okay. Is anybody willing to entertain a motion to suspend rules?
I believe that we suspend the rules and vote on this again. I'd like that discussion as well.
Okay. And we need support.
I support that.
Okay. So, I have a motion from Peter, Councilman Hersberg, support from Councilmember Hornbuckle. And I believe that needs roll call.
My understanding is that the motion, Councilman, is to suspend the rules to vote again. I thought that's what I heard. Yes. Okay. Yes. Certainly, a roll call would be advisable.
All right.
Councilman Godbout, to suspend the rules to vote again.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampey.
Yes.
Pro Tem Markowski.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
I just happen to have two sheets of paper here, already made out. Any objection to me throwing these two names back in the hat?
Peter wanted to have a discussion.
You're in charge.
Thank you. Councilmember Hersberg, he wanted to have discussion, so as the maker of the motion, you have the privilege of the floor first?
I do have discussion, but I, but we, Councilman Godbout has a light on.
All of the lights are on. I'm sorry.
Well, this is kind of a silly thing to be taking up time in our meeting. Anybody here can correct me if I'm wrong, but any council member can go to that MML convention and have the cost reimbursed. The only difference for the delegate is that they're voting on items that the MML overall are going to be proactive on in the next year, to which Councilman Godbout spent the voting delegate on that for several years. So, only one council member asked me for their vote, so, I mean, I'm willing to hear if you want to go, or what we're going to do. Maybe we should have some discuss, uh, sorry, some discussion and make a decision. I don't want to see this go to a third or fourth vote. It seemed like the three-to-three split's pretty solid, so maybe we want to have some discussion on it.
All right. Is this, I'm going to clear them all. Okay. From the supporter, do you have discussion?
Yeah. Kind of echo the same thing. Only one person came to ask me to be a part of this, to be nominated, but I also feel that we should spread the love and allow someone else to have that opportunity to experience that as well. So, like I said, only one person came to me and asked for a nomination and gave me some feedback on why, and I agree that someone else should also be experienced. Unfortunately, I'm not able to go, so I didn't ask for a nomination to go.
Okay. Is there other discussion? All right. Seeing no further discussion, we'll move on to the voting process.
I'm going to leave.
Shake your backs.
All right.
And we're just going to say?
First name drawn is Mr. Godbout. Second name drawn is Councilman Sampey.
Okay. And so, we'll conduct ourselves as we did before, in the affirmative for support and the negative for lack thereof, and the clerk will be so gracious as to roll call the vote.
For Councilman Godbout. Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
No.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampey.
No.
Pro Tem Markowski. Motion does not pass. Rather, that nomination is not accepted. Let me go to... The next name on the list was just Councilwoman Sampey.
Voting will be the same, affirmative for support, negative for lack thereof. The clerk will conduct roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott. Councilman McDermott.
No.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes.
Pro Tem Markowski.
Yes.
This too does not pass.
So, I have one question, like, we had, we had a moment to...
Excuse, can you ask?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can I, can I?
Yes, we're gonna have a, what are, what is your request?
I just wanna make a comment to the people that we nominated.
I don't think that would be in order.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so you're saying, yes, go ahead?
No, I think that would be out of order. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're clearly in a deadlock. Are we going to spend the next hour voting the same way? Okay.
Do you wanna, do you wanna hear from either one of us?
Sure, let's enter, let's entertain that. Perhaps that'll change some people's feelings.
Okay.
So, do you want to, Mr. Clerk, if you would, can you put the names in the box so that we can hear from, you'll select a name, and then they can speak as to why they should be attending?
Oh, okay. You mean, we're gonna do this whichever order these come out? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. That way, I don't have to determine that.
Okay.
I could just have flipped a coin if I had a coin. Okay.
First name drawn.
Is Councilmember Godbout. Council, Councilmember Godbout, your mic is...
Second name, Melissa Sampe.
Sure.
Thanks. For those that aren't aware of what the MML conference is, this is the annual convention for the Michigan Municipal League, which they vote on the core principles of the league and what legislative actions they're going to take place. I have been the delegate for the city for probably close to 20 years, going to the Michigan Municipal League Convention. And I believe outside of Councilman Hersberg is the, are the, I'm the only council member that's ever been to, currently sitting, to the Michigan Municipal League Convention. As such, you know, this wouldn't have even been on the agenda had I not sent an email when I noticed, when the first agenda came out, that this was not on there. Normally, this is on the meeting in September so that the information can get to the league in time so that we have a voting delegate. So, due to the fact that, A, and normally, in the past, the, if a new, another council member wanted to go, it would've been as the alternate. And as was stated, any council member can go to the convention. I already have my reservations for the convention. I've gone to the convention for 20, 20 years. So, I will be attending the convention whether or not I get the nomination for this or not. But it's, you know, ironic that we didn't even know that it had to be on the agenda, and now there's some contention as to who should be the delegate for the city. I've represented this city to the best of my abilities at the Michigan Municipal League. I sit on several committees at the Michigan Municipal League and am involved on a monthly basis in meetings at the Michigan Municipal League. So, I'm fairly well-versed in what takes pace, place, and what transpires. Ironically, as well, and it was even, as I noted in my email, the vote also cast the vote for the projects. That Westland has a project sitting there that's to be voted on at the convention for the project of the year. Again, this wasn't even gonna be on our agenda. We wouldn't have had a vote, or we wouldn't have had a delegate to vote on our own project at the Michigan Municipal League had I not brought this forward. So, I'm asking for support so that we can move this forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Godbout. Councilwoman Sampe, would you like to speak?
Sure, thank you. And I don't have any problems with Mr. Godbout going. It has nothing to do with that. I am really looking forward to going as well. I already had plans to go. I'm a speed networker and someone that is able to really rally up support for our project as well as mentioned. So, Westland does have a project in the race right now for the project of the year. So, I'm looking forward to going there, connecting with my colleagues from other municipalities, and, and just having a new voice and a new face at MML. It has nothing to do with Mr. Godbout not being a good representation at all. It's just the excitement of, you know, I know Mr. Godbout won't be around forever, you know, just like myself, so it's just kinda getting, no, it has nothing to do with that. It's just saying, getting new...
Okay.
I'm sorry, order, sir, thank you. It has everything to do with just getting new blood in, excitement for the city, and getting new blood involved in MML. So, that's my, I guess, pitch per se. It's just getting new blood involved in being involved in MML. And again, I am interested in going and being excited, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. At this time, and our suspended rules of nomination, first I would like to inquire if the council has the desire to open nominations.
Are you asking us to nominate someone else?
I'm just asking if you have the desire to open nominations, if there's, for additional candidates. Here, my mic's on, do you have? It's showing on, I don't know, okay. All right, so I see no desire for any additional nominations. I say we vote one more time. If we can't make a vote happen, um... Wow. Then we won't, yeah, we won't have a delegate. You know? Hmm, okay. Sorry, I'm just having a moment of frustration. I'm sure you guys can understand that. All right, so...
While you're thinking about that, may I offer something?
I would love it. I was thinking that perhaps we should tape...
It does not have to do with this issue.
Bring the consent calendar item that was moved to new business forward.
So, yes, so normally, when we move an item from the consent calendar, it's 1A, or 1A, 1B, et cetera. Normally, when we do nominations, there are nominations and then a vote. But today, in between the nomination and the vote, should've been item 1A.
Right.
Kinda got lost in the shuffle because the clerk...
And I think we're gonna continue to be lost in that shuffle if we don't bring...
So, at some point, whether it's after the council chooses to vote again for a delegate, or between now and then, 1A needs to be addressed formally by the council.
Okay. So, is there any desire by the council to table the vote until after agenda item 1A is brought forward? So that, that agenda item can move forward?
You mean postpone, right?
Postpone, I'm sorry, postpone until item 1A. Thank you, Councilmember Godbout. Is there support?
Support.
Okay. So I have support from Councilwoman Sampe. Is there any?
Give me one second. So the motion would be to temporarily postpone the selection of delegate until after item 2, 1A, rather, is considered.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct, okay. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any dissent? Is there any dissent? Does that need, sing?
Nope.
No, we're gonna roll call it, or...
No, no, no.
No, we're good?
We're good. Any dissent? No, motion passes unanimously.
All right, I appreciate the cooperation of the council. So at this time...
We're moving to item 1A on the agenda. Adoption of Prepared Resolution Recognizing and Commemorating October 2023 as the 78th Anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month in the city of Westland.
Is there a motion?
So...
There's a motion by Councilwoman Sampe. Is there support?
Support.
There is support from Councilmember McDermott. Joining us this evening is a representative from STEP. I would love to have the petitioner approach the podium and give us a little background as to what this resolution entails.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brent McCaulsky. I'm president and CEO of Services to Enhance Potential. STEP is our acronym. And I just wanted to state my appreciation for the council taking the steps tonight to proclaim October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. As you may know, STEP works very hard with about 1,500 folks every year in a variety of ways to improve individuals' lives, and one of those being workforce development and employment. So for us to be able to be recognized during this month in everybody's hard work, not only the job seekers, but all of the staff around the state, to be able to, to recognize and do all that hard work is nice to be able to, to be able to stand in front of you tonight. So, as Ray Soelklin said earlier today, this, this does mean significant movement. Years ago, we would not be able to have this conversation where employers are talking more frequently about employing individuals with disabilities and other challenges. So, these type of proclamations, these type of efforts really mean a lot for not only the disabled population, but also the communities which everybody lives in. So, thank you again, and I'll, I'll see you again probably shortly. All right, bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay, and do we have anything from the maker?
Yes, thank you so much. You're doing a great job, too.
Oh, thanks.
So, thank you, Brent, for, for covering that, too. I actually brought that forward because I really feel very passionate about those that have disabilities. As those may know, I do have a brother with low-functioning autism, and I see the challenges that he has every day. And, and he does meals on wheels, and he does it for free. And you will never find a more warm and compassionate person at your door, giving you a hug, giving you your meals. So, by bringing this forward, it was not only near and dear to my heart, but I really felt that Westland could benefit from taking those in the community and just recognizing them every day for what they do. So, so thank you, Brent, for reminding us, and I appreciate the colleague's support for, for this as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any comment from the supporter?
Yes, thank you, Council President Pro Tem, and thank you for stepping into the chair tonight in a, I guess, somewhat contentious meeting. Appreciate that. I just wanna thank my colleague for bringing this forward. You know, disability awareness is something that this community takes very seriously. I know Ray is always advocating for it. It affects my family as well. My mom's brother suffers from a, he's differently abled with a mental disability. So, I wanna thank my colleague for bringing this up and getting it on the agenda tonight. And for everybody out there in the community who has a disability, who just functions as, and wants to be treated as just a normal person out there getting a job and making a contribution, we hear you, we see you. To STEP, who is an ally for people in the community, for folks at the ARC who help out in that work, for the folks at NAMI, at, and do the NAMI walks every year here in Michigan, thank you for what you do, for just bringing people into the community and all the great work that you do to make sure that everybody's treated as equal and equitably, and has respect and can achieve what they want out of their own life. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? All right, any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, it's unanimously passed. Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you, STEP, for the wonderful work that you do. We're going to move into our third round of voting for our designations here. Mr. Clerk, if you would, be so kind.
I have in my hand two brand-new, recently filled-out...
Magic.
Ballot forms, if you will. One says Councilwoman Sampe, the other says Councilman Godbout. They are in the box. I'll give them their blue shaking.
Better not hurt Cheryl's box, I tell you.
Councilman Godbout is first. Councilwoman Sampe is second.
Imagine that. All right. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, we are going to do our third and hopefully final vote for the delegate designation. Please vote in a favor and an affirmative manner, a lack of support in a negative, and we will have the clerk run roll call.
For Councilman Godbout, Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
No.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
No.
Pro Tem Markowski.
All right, for, for the sake of moving on with this evening, I'm going to support Councilman Godbout.
Councilman Godbout is the delegate. There is not a need to advance the vote to the next person. Congratulations, Mr. Godbout. Moving to new business, item three, nomination...
No.
Of alternate, in, in case of the inability of the delegate to attend to the annual MML convention to be held October 18 through 20, 2023 at the Grand Traverse Resort in Traverse City. Nominations.
All right.
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Sampe.
Okay, we have a nomination for Councilwoman Sampe. Are there other nominations? I don't know, this isn't showing, so if you can do one of these for me, that's helpful.
Motion to close nominations.
Okay, we have a motion to close nominations. Is there support?
Support.
We have support from, what's called council president? From Councilman Godbout. Is there any dissent? Or do we have to do a roll, we don't have to do roll call, do we?
No.
We all know who we are by this point. Okay. Any dissent for closing nominations? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, nominations are closed.
Moving to new business, item four, designation of alternate to attend the MML convention, October 18 through 20, at the Grand Traverse Resort. One person has been nominated, Councilwoman Sampe. There should be a motion to affirm by acclamation her designation.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, motion.
Okay, motion? All right, we have a motion to accept the designation of Councilwoman Sampe by acclamation from Councilmember Delano Hornbuckle. And do we have support?
Support.
We have support from Councilmember Michael McDermott. Okay.
Roll call's not necessary.
Not necessary, okay, thank you. Is there any dissent?
Dissent.
Okay, no dissent from Peter Hersberg. So if dissent being made...
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes.
Pro Tem Markowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I appreciate your patience, and I wish you both a wonderful experience at MML. Okay. Sorry. We are moving on to public comment. Who wants to hear the paragraph again? All right. Everyone speaking before... Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, or other speakers or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their time is exhausted, whichever is first. I'm gonna start on my left. Mr. Barra. Oh, sorry.
Lost a few inches. Greetings, Mr. Mayor, council. It's that time of year again. I probably could have done this during announcements and presentations, but I wouldn't have missed this enjoyable council meeting for anything. Today, I'm here to talk to you about the Wayne Westland Veteran Meal Program. This year is our 10th annual event. Give people a little bit of history. 10 years ago, State Representative Bob Kozowski and I hatched a plan to give away turkeys, and we had 30 veterans sign up. And they came, and we literally delivered turkeys from the trunks of our car outside the Wayne Ford Civic League property. And of course, the next year, it went to 60 turkeys. And from then, it turned into full meal packages. It got involved with sponsors and donations, more community involvement. And I'm proud to say that as of last year, we gave away 392 family meals for veteran families, surviving spouses, and other people, active-duty service member families, which was... You know, we kept growing and growing. We thought about the families at home. Their husbands or wives are overseas, serving our country. They're unlimited resources, so we wanted to include them, too, in our program. So Wayne and Westland, veterans, surviving spouses, or active-duty families are recipients of this program. The meal will feed between six to eight people, giving our veterans an opportunity to gather their families and bring them in. You can register online at thecityofwestland.com/veteranmealprogram. There's a link on the front page. Mr. Brown has put out there where you can register online. There's also a link for Square Donation Site. We do solicit donations for this program. Last year, it was $19,800 for those 392 meals. This year, with the price increases, we're expecting about $23,000, perhaps even $24,000 needed to be raised to do this. So I'm asking from my heart, please, reach out, give whatever you can. The links are on there. You can donate. Veterans or families that want to receive a meal package can come to the greeter station here at City Hall and pick up this form, which is right out on the counter. Take it home, fill it out, or fill it out here and turn it in. It will go to the mayor's office, and the ladies in the mayor's office will process them into the computer because we're using a common database to keep all this information straight. So it's a great program, brings families together. It's important. Again, this is our 10th year, so I encourage everybody to donate. Thank you, Councilman McDermott, for your donation. I saw that pop up in the computer yesterday. Much appreciated, sir. And the rest of you, give it some thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on my right? Rock, paper, scissors back there? Okay. Ray, we like when you close the show with your positive messages, right?
I can't decide. There's no decisions tonight.
Right. Everybody.
Emily Baumann. As I mentioned earlier, I am a candidate for City Council. And I guess the first thing I want to say is that I am... Thank you for... I'm glad you guys were able to pass the prepared resolution. I do agree that it did happen fast. It was missed on, for those who saw the agenda on Friday. So I think there is some concern that, you know, just from a resident being able to see things on the agenda and know that they're coming up before the surprises. So it was good you moved off to new business. I also have, you know, between mental disability and others and some physical in my family, it is very concerning. You know, it is good to always be aware of that. So thank you for passing that. I do have... I'm curious, because I asked questions in the beginning, and they weren't addressed. And instead, the votes were moved to move the consent items over without even acknowledging or addressing the questions that were posed. So I guess I'm a little concerned about that, that why they wouldn't even be addressed as a question in the process because there was an opportunity to have given those answers. So I do want to... I am concerned with that. And then I do want to just mention that as all the candidates for City Council were on, the League of Women Voters video is out. So if anyone wants to see the candidate responses to the League of Women Voters questions, that is out there. It came out, I think, yesterday or something like that. So I'm sure it's on a number of Facebook pages as well as the League of Women Voters website directly. So for anyone who's looking forward to voting and knowing a little bit more about the candidates, that's... I know it's a great video, and I've heard some good things about it. So that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Ruby.
Good evening, everyone. Ruby Richards, Westland resident. I'm here with an announcement. The NAACP Western Wayne County is having their 26 Freedom Fund Dinner next Sunday, October 15, 2023, at the Soho Banquet and Event Center at 34615 Warren. The reception starts at 4:00 p.m. Our keynote speaker is Derek Johnson. He's the president and CEO of NAACP. And you can go online and purchase tickets at www.westernwaycountynacp.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone on my right? Oh, hang on, Ray. We're gonna leave you to be our show closer, I think. Because we're all gonna need that positive... That positive proclamation you give us every week.
Please don't let me follow, Ray.
That's it.
Oh.
Greetings. My name is Annete Joyce. I serve as the constituent services manager with Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib. So greetings, and thank you all so much for your service and partnership. Just wanted to bring some updates. So crisis averted for 45 days. We have passed a... Last Friday, late last Friday, there was a continuing resolution passed until mid-November to continue and avoid a government shutdown. On our website, tlaib.house.gov, there is a full FAQ page to just give you some brief guidance of what happens in the case of a shutdown and what federal agencies will be affected, what services will be affected. So please visit our website. Also, last week, just to recap, we were able to do... We were able to... Congresswoman Tlaib was able to vote yes on two powerful bills. Firstly, it was the Native American Child Protection Act as well as the Veterans Benefits Improvement Act of 2023. Also, Congresswoman Tlaib was able to reintroduce the... Excuse me, Restaurant Workers Bill of Rights in order to improve the lives of restaurant workers nationwide. We were also able to co-sponsor the Community Railway... Let me get the name right. I'm so sorry. The Row Worker and Community Safety Act, where we ensure some of that hazardous waste... Hazardous waste that's transported through our neighborhoods every day is now regulated. And also, excited to announce that Congresswoman has... Was appointed to serve on the House Oversight and Accountability Committee again. So congratulations to the Congresswoman, as well as she will continue to serve on the House Financial Services Committee. So also, just want to bring greetings and again, remind you all of our neighborhood service centers. Right now, we have three service centers that serves as our district offices. Our main flagship office is over in College Park on Otter Drive in South Theo. We are open Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. I'll also leave some information out in the lobby, but also want to give our phone number in case we need... In case any residents may need any assistance. That's 313-463-6220. Again, 313-463-6220. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That was very fast phone number. So it was 313...
She said 463.
463.
62.
62.
20.
20. Okay. I don't think we have closed captioning, so I wanted the folks at home to be able to get it. All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Anyone on the left? No one on the left? Okay. Anyone? Want to go before Ray or after Ray? Ray's gonna go... Ray's gonna wrap up the show, right? Go ahead. I don't want to say...
My name's Tina. I go by Christina Brockovich, for those who don't know me. Thursday, September 21st, I got a private call from a Westland police officer who stated he wanted to remain anonymous. He went in to tell me that Jeff... Former chief Jed Rusick deleted files of Officer Compton. They obtained... I guess the files showed he had racial slurs for somebody he arrested. Jed Rusick deleted it because he didn't want William Marshall's family or anyone else to see it during that lawsuit. I wanted to make you aware. Also, that story is gonna be breaking, that video footage I've released to the media. As you guys know, I'm helping Officer Buckley clear his name. That officer, he deserves justice. He was wrongfully terminated from his job. The police dash cam video clearly shows that both Compton and Gomez were fully aware that William Marshall ingested the cocaine. None of them decided to tell anybody. Ron Buckley, Sergeant Buckley, former Sergeant Buckley, was not even aware that William Marshall ingested the crack cocaine. No one even told him. In fact, he wasn't even responsible for anybody in the jail. It was actually Lieutenant Blanchard, I believe, at the time. He wasn't even charged. Compton and Gomez weren't charged. But I'm expecting Worthy to charge Compton and Gomez. So just so you know.
Thank you. Anyone on the left? Ray, I think it's your turn.
First of all, I want to thank the council for the support for the Awareness Month for the employment. We need to have this conversation. And it's finally getting this conversation rolling. And it's very good, because I ain't gonna stop. I'm gonna keep going at it out there because it's important. It's not just here. I'm gonna hit Livonia. I'm gonna hit Dearborn yet. Talk about my disability advocacy things. It needs to be done. And people should be getting chances, even at the polls, if they want to work at a poll. You know what? I put an application, and hopefully I can help out. That's what I'm gonna let everybody know. I'm gonna try it. It's experience, but hey, I can probably do something there. So that's what I'm gonna do. Coffee hour. I'm planning on going to that, 9 o'clock, here, Coven and them. And I have a couple of questions for them, anyway, that I want to talk about some issues, nothing about here, but just the, you know, Medicaid or the freedom to work. I want to talk about that because it's important to me, too. And when people are working, there's like people age out. And when they age out, that's not fair for them. They should not be penalized. So I just want to bring that up, too. So anyway, I am going to the mayor's State of the Speech on Wednesday. And I want to hear all the good stuff that's going on here and listen to some positive stuff. And also, I trained six peer mentors two weeks ago that went good. So peers around Michigan, we are... They're growing. We are going places, and I'm real happy about that. And I'm gonna tell everybody, I ain't going nowhere. I love what I do. So I'm out in the city. I have had people talk to me and said, you know, I see you on TV. You're always positive. Keep up the good work, what you're doing. So as me as the chair of the Disability Advocacy Group, I'm gonna keep moving the group forward. We don't sit around. We're out there. I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other individual who'd like to make a comment this evening? Anybody else? Okay, seeing no more public comments, we're gonna move on to comments from your mayor.
Good evening, Council President Protam. Great job tonight. Ray, thank you for the positive comments. It's big to be positive and stay on the positive side of things, so I appreciate that. Looking forward to my State of the City address. It will be this Wednesday, October 4, 2023. We're almost sold out. We got over 300 RSVPs, so there's a lot of excitement for this event. If you have an RSVP, please RSVP as soon as possible so we know how many people to purchase food for. So the address of the friendship center is 1119 North Newburgh Road. You can RSVP at mayor@cityofwestland.com, or you can call my office at 734-467-3200. The doors open at 11:30. The program at 12:00 p.m. with lunch immediately following. We have my speech with maybe a couple of short videos on there. It should be about 35 to 40 minutes, so I won't ramble on too much. We are gonna have three special award presentations, which will also be a part of those 40 minutes. We're giving the Circle of Excellence Award to a much-deserving city clerk, Richard LeBlanc, who served in darn near every branch of government available. We're giving the Legacy of Leadership Award to former mayor William R. Wild, who was our longest-serving mayor. And we're giving the Lifetime Achievement Award to our Director of Senior Resources, Barbara Shemell Markham. To answer the question to the young lady that asked about, you know, bidding and do we evaluate those bids? I kind of smiled at Craig Brown because him and I met probably a month ago. He showed me a humongous spreadsheet of about 20-plus vendors that he was evaluating for our phone system. At least 20 different categories, maybe, on what he was evaluating. So my staff does go through and evaluate everything thoroughly. Not maybe as thorough as Craig does, but it was very, very thorough, and I was very impressed. I actually brought it here for almost like show and tell. If someone was gonna ask about it, I couldn't wait to show it, and nobody asked, so I didn't show it. But we do thoroughly evaluate all the bids and the vendors we work with. And I challenge my entire staff to be... To find any efficiencies within our government to work with us, for the city. As far as the Michigan Municipal League, we'll work with whoever wants to attend. And we already have our reservations booked. My office will be there with a few staff members. We're gonna be there to pitch our project, which, as was stated, is the Mission to Mars and all-inclusive barrier-free playground in Tatten Park. We did have some swag. I ran out to grab it to show the folks at home and some folks in the audience. We bought some drawstring bags, a water bottle with the logo on here, and then we got a stress ball, which I couldn't find, unfortunately. Sinclair Recreation split the cost with us for that, so we're excited about that. It's a voting process, right? Obviously, you want to whip up as much support as you can get. So I'm gonna pitch the project onstage. We'll play a short video. We'll pitch the project, and we'll try to talk to folks as they come by our vendor table to let them know about the project. I'm probably being biased, but I think it's the number-one project out of the four. There's four other... Three other communities that are up against us, and ours is by far the best. So we just really got to get the vote out, get the word out to get people to vote for it. Got some great news. My office received word that we've been awarded the Fiscal Year 25 Safety Program from MDOT for pedestrian countdown pad signals at 42 different intersections in our city. The grand award is $200,000. While the project was planned for 2025, we were able to pull this program into 2024. So council, if you drive by the intersection of Newburgh and Marquette, you'll also notice a marked improvement as we had our crews paint the ladder crossing, or piano stripes, as we want to call it, for better visibility of that crosswalk. Originally, we were told by MDOT that we couldn't move forward, but when we first proposed those additions, but we were finally given permission to do so, and we did that this last week. So DPS also updated the original school crossing sign to add the word "ahead." So now we have the fluorescent sign with the kids crossing, and it says "ahead." And we continue to have a heavy police presence out there as well for the safety of those that use that crosswalk during peak times. More great news. The City of Westland Fire Department has been awarding a Staffing for Adequate Fire and Safety Emergency Response Grant through FEMA, or SAFER, as they call it, in the amount of $5,799,867. This grant will allow the hiring of 15 firefighters for a period of three years. And unlike years past, this grant actually... And unlike years past, this grant actually, grand award requires no city match, so it's a huge, huge win for our city. And only a small percentage of the thousands of departments that apply are awarded safer grants. Public safety is a top priority for me, and I know everybody on council, so we were very fortunate to be awarded with this very competitive grant. The Westland Fire Department recently hired six new firefighters, which brought them to the 2023-24 budgeted staffing level. And recruitment for new firefighters will begin immediately. The addition of these 15 new firefighters comes after a comprehensive evaluation of the city's emergency response needs and a consultation with fire department officials. I do want to express my deepest gratitude to Senator Stabenow and Senator Peters for their diligence in securing these funds for Westland. Last two things, as many of you may or may not know, we have met with Namdar Realty, the owners of the Westland Shopping Center, on many occasions in 2023. They recently hired an individual who's been tasked with 30 of their properties that they've been prioritized for redevelopment or distressed properties, Westland's being one of them. We've been working closely with the redevelopment team to provide leads of potential developers that would be well-suited to take on the project and that we have met with, I'm sorry, let me start that part over here. We've been working closely with the redevelopment team to provide leads of potential developers that would be well-suited to take on the project and that we have met with and who expressed interest in the past. Based on that list of leads, a developer with a history of undertaking successful mall redevelopment projects began talks with Namdar to negotiate a deal, purchase agreement. In July, we met with the interested party once again, who noted the city's proposed investment at the Annex at Nankin, which is going at the former service merchandise site, as a major driver in his interest. Our next meeting with the developer is scheduled for October 13th, so we're hoping to have really, really good news that this developer purchases the property and we can move forward with a great project at the Westland Shopping Center. Lastly, I just want to recognize or remind folks to attend the Westland Board Member Fair and Recognition Day. I think the gentleman left that talked about all the comments on Facebook. I hope he invites all those people, because I love to see people interact and get involved in our city. I see many board members in our audience as we, as we sit here. Those board members that show up or folks that are interested, they'll receive deserved recognition for their dedicated board service if they currently meet on a board. They'll meet city liaisons and board members if they're interested in any boards. They can visit various information booths, get help with a board member application, and also network with community members. So, that event, again, is our Westland Board Member Fair and Recognition Day. It's gonna be on October 12th, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. We start a little early for folks that maybe could, that could get there early, and we're going till 7:00 PM. It's gonna be right here at City Hall. There will be light refreshments served, and like I said, my staff will be here, I'll be here on hand to answer any questions about if anybody wants to get involved in our city. So, that's all I got tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I will now move on to comments from the city attorney.
To the Chair, nothing from the city attorney's office tonight.
Thank you. All right. Comments from council members. We will start this evening with Councilmember Godbout.
Thanks. First, I wanted to congratulate Mo Aub on his being awarded the Leadership Detroit Class for the, for this upcoming year. You know, we've got a lot of great directors, a lot of young directors in this city, and here's an example of one of them that's continuing to excel. He's been the president of the Michigan Association of Planners, and now he's taking part in this leadership class that's put on, I think it's through SEMCOG or, and so I just wanted to congratulate Mo on that. It's a, he does a great job, as do a lot of our directors, and it's, you know, it doesn't go unnoticed, you know? We've got, you know, and I get out to a lot of other communities throughout the state, and we have a, and unfortunately, Dan's already left, but we have a number of young professionals, as far as directors go, that do, do an outstanding job. And a lot of cities are very jealous of our younger talent that we have. And it's, but we also have a good mix, right? We've got some seasoned directors to help coach and mentor these, the younger directors, and, you know, Craig, Craig Brown's another one. We've got Devin Adams, Aubrey. So, a lot of other communities are hurting for recruiting young talent, and hopefully we can keep our directors out of all the politics and just let them do their jobs. So, I want to thank my colleagues on the final nomination for the MML delegate. Again, it's, it becomes pretty obvious that it's just politics involved and not what's... Anyway, I'll get, I'll get past that. Couple of weeks ago, we had a study session on multiple topics, and unfortunately, the minutes didn't reflect some of the things that were follow-up items or things that need to get addressed. But one of the, one of the study sessions was on our marijuana ordinance. And I forwarded, and the fact that I've been requesting for quite some time that we sit down and revisit our ordinance, because it's outdated and it needs revision. But we haven't had any success in moving that forward or having any meaningful discussions on that. But we're past time for doing that, particularly on the marijuana ordinance. I forwarded an email that I received from the person that was awarded the micro-business application. And the state has changed the rules for a micro-business and reclassified it. And unless we change our ordinance like we should, they can't get their license that we've already approved for them to get. So, to the Chair, I'd like to know when, as soon as possible, because, you know, they, they like to get their business going. And we've approved it for the one license. We need to change our ordinance in order to allow them to continue the process, and we just can't continue to delay things. We sit here, week after week, for years now, and do nothing. And it's, it's extremely frustrating, and now it's affecting our ability to get the businesses up and running. So, I'd like to know how quick we can get a study session scheduled, so that the city attorney can prevent, present us with the options minimally on this section of the ordinance, but I think we have to have a deeper discussion on the ordinance itself and move this forward. We've sat on this for far too long.
I'm writing it down. I'm not ignoring you.
Okay.
Would you like me to respond to you, or would you like me to wait to my comments?
Yeah, you can wait to your comments.
Okay.
So, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, we'll just continue down the line to Councilwoman Sampe.
Thank you. I guess I did a good job on the meeting. I hope everyone's doing well. Thank you to my colleagues for your support. To MML as alternate delegate, and congratulations, Councilwoman Godbout, on your appointment. I do look forward to attending. And also, thank you to my colleagues as well for approving the National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Like I mentioned, it's very important. I'm sorry, I'm trying not to choke up. Probably one of the most significant members of STEP actually lost, whoo, I'm sorry. Lost his battle with cancer on September 23rd. And Edward Clayton Christopher Nicholson of Westland. The Nicholson family actually is a family friend of ours as well. My brother went to Berger with Edward, so this is, this is, I'm sorry, this is very hard for me, but I cannot, I can't imagine what his family's going through. He didn't understand he had cancer, but he had the biggest smile. His heart was bigger than anyone would ever know. And for someone that had a disability, it's just wrong. It's absolutely wrong that cancer took him. And his dad is so strong. And I'm so sorry, I'm trying to get myself together. So, as Dad would ask him, "How are you doing today?" And his response was, "Dad, I feel good. I feel good." And deep down, we all knew it wasn't true. And one of my most cherished memories with Edward was doing an autism awareness show that he would text me every day, and he would say, "Own it, Melissa, own it. What am I wearing? Like, let's go to Kohl's, what should I wear?" And for someone that is so kind, I just hope that we can just be like him. There's so much bad in this world, there's so much negativity, there's so much hate, there's so much divide, there's so much political BS. I just wish that people would just be kind like him. I just really wish that we would see him out in the community again, because his light was just so powerful. And he really reminded us how simple life can be. So, I just wanted to share my deepest condolences to the Nicholson family and just let them know that Westland's thinking about him. And we appreciate his contribution here to Westland. I really hope that as a city, we can honor him, because again, he has been around in the city his whole entire life. My family just visited, the Nicholson family dropped off a bench for his memory, and I know Don Nicholson is not doing well. So, if you know him, please, just let him know that you're thinking of him and, and give him, you know, your hugs and prayers. Now, let's all take a deep breath. And I'm so sorry I lost it. It's just, it's difficult when you lose somebody so powerful and someone with just so much light in the community. On Saturday, I was honored to join my colleagues at the Westland Police Community Partnership. There was a fantastic party, and the Westland Community Partnership works to support the community in many ways. There was nearly 400 people there. I know a few of my colleagues joined as well. They do a lot of community events, such as child safety education and great programs for citizens. So, I want to thank Sergeant Capodra and Officer Margie Kelly for all your hard work on Saturday's event and all your efforts, because again, it was, it was very well-attended and very well-received. On, I'm sorry, Wednesday, October 4th, the mayor, like he stated, is doing a State of the City address. And I'm really looking forward to, to hearing what the future looks like for Westland. I did have some sneak peeks at the topics, and I know the mayor has been working really hard. And the residents, it sounds like, has more opportunity for, for RSVP-ing if you want to contact the mayor's office. I wanted to also plug a few things that folks have reached out to me, others that they haven't, but I wanted to plug as well. The Westland Historic Village Park is, is doing a haunted yard sale on October 7th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Perrinville High School on Cowan Road. So, it looks like you're looking for updating your Halloween decorations, and they're gonna have a lot of vendors and fall decor. So, if you want to join them, again, that's October 7th. The Fire Station is gonna be doing a great event, Fire Station One. The Westland Firefighters is gonna do a fire prevention awareness lunch. So, that's on Saturday, October 14th, from 11:00 to 2:00. And then, the Norway Community Citizens Council, I saw this and I wanted to promote it. So, that's Saturday, October 14th, from 11:00 to 2:00. And I know last year, you guys had a great event, and I hope that everything's successful. I'm gonna try to stop by. It's like Divide and Conquer on the 14th. It looks like it's gonna be a busy day. And then, we will have, I don't, I was surprised Mayor didn't mention this, but we have our trunk or treat coming up too. So, Wednesday, October 25th, 5:30 to 7:30. It's gonna be in the District Court Parking Lot on Ford Road. Hopefully, there's opportunities for vehicles as well too. Hopefully, that was a question I had, but I can reach out to administration. But trunk or treats are great for all kids alike. It's, like I said, 5:30 to 7:30. And attendees aged 12 and under are encouraged to dress up. So, our next meeting, just to wrap up, and again, I'm so sorry I lost it, kinda got emotional thinking about stepping Edward, but our next meeting's gonna be on Monday, October 16th, at 7:00 PM. Any resident that would like to reach out to me on Facebook, I'm Councilwoman Melissa Sampe, that's my personal page. Until then, be kind and safe with each other. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Now, we'll move on to Councilmember Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. My condolences also go out to the Nicholson family. That was a shock to me. I didn't even know anything was going on. But we, council had just got the message that his son had passed away, so I think we were all shocked with the news. So, my condolences to Don Nicholson and his entire family. You know, I've been on this council for eight years now, and the amount of dysfunctional things going on just has come, it's blown up out of proportion now, and tonight was a prime example. I think both of the candidates who wanted to go to the MML should have maybe talked to everybody, see if they had four votes, being that only six of us are here. I still stand by my decision. I have no issue with Councilwoman Sampe going as the alternate. I voted no, because I think, well, just because of the way things went down. There was some back and forth with the audience. There was back and forth with the audience at one of our study sessions. I just couldn't give my vote in support of that. And I do think you should attend a convention before asking to be the voting delegate to go to that. So, you know, there's a lot of things that should have been coming up on our agenda the last two meetings that didn't. And it's all because of the election, and because of politics, and because of who's supporting who for mayor. And the amount of dysfunction that's going on here is really an embarrassment. And I've, I've never seen it so bad in my eight years here. So, that's it for me. I gotta stop before I get myself in trouble. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for stopping yourself. Okay, moving on, we'll go to Councilmember Hornbuckle.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, I want to start off by getting something off my chest. You know, I, like you say, you want to be quiet before you get in trouble. Well, I put myself in trouble. So, I want to start off by saying, during the last city council meeting in September 18th, I had the opportunity to deliver my closing statements. However, I must acknowledge that I made a most unfortunate choice of words during that moment, and I wanted to make it clear to everyone in the city. I do not in any way find aspects of shooting incidents hilarious. I want, I would like to stress that I am deeply committed individual who generally cares about the well-being of our community. I will, sorry. While I am strong, passionate about the city, it's evidence that public speaking is an area where I still need room to grow. It creates anxiety for me, and I see it as a very, a very good opportunity for improvement, to continue my career. Sorry. I come to realize that evening that I had made a mistake, and later, it was also pointed out. I want to take a moment to apologize to everyone who I offended in my previous statement. What I was trying to converse is that after engaging with residents at Holiday Park following the incident, they expressed that they did not feel unsafe. It's important to understand that that was an isolated incident and that it was being handled by a dedicated police force. The more pressing concerns that our community face on a regular basis is related to speeding cars and frequent traffic violations. I fully acknowledge that my choice of words were entirely wrong, and I take full responsibility for that. Full responsibility. Westland is not just a place I live, it's my community, and I take pride in working towards making it a better place for all residents. Thank you for understanding, and I am committed to continue my efforts in improving our beloved Westland. So, to the mayor, city council, people in the audience and people at home, thank you for the continued support. I truly appreciate it. Now that I got that off my chest, I would like to move to the next thing. Over the weekend, I read a book and a quote, I won't go over the whole quote, but I would like to share a quote with you. It says, "If you want to smile, give a smile." Just let that sink in for a minute before I move on. One way to give a smile is by help delivering meals to seniors. Meals on Wheels is short 200 drivers in Wayne County. In the Westland area, they deliver 1,700 meals weekly to our seniors. The good news is, they have great, great volunteering opportunities where you can deliver meals to our seniors. It, it doesn't take an entire day, it takes about an hour for a route, and they'll reverse part of your gas. If you're ready to lend a hand or know someone who could use a hand-delivered meal, check out wayncounty.com/svs. And if you prefer to reach out by phone, you can call 734-326-5341 to volunteer. But if you're someone that needs a meal or extra smile, call 734-326-5202. And if that doesn't work, you can also reach me, and I'll provide that afterwards, but... So, let's keep our seniors smiling. Next, I want to talk about the DIA. I noticed when I was checking the DIA, I noticed a couple of court members' term expiring pretty soon. And I want to kind of make a recommendation that the council and the mayor look at reappointing those court people. I believe the DIA has some, oh, sorry.
D E I.
Oh, I'm sorry, D E I. I'm looking at it, I'm sorry, sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, DEI, I'm looking at it, I'm sorry, sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. So DEI, I'm going to just look at the word. Uh, I think the DI, the DEI, sorry, uh, made some progress internally and I believe having that court, uh, people to keep carrying on for their mission and plan, uh, is very critical for our city. Uh, I also want to invite everyone here, city council, mayor, to join me on November 13th at their meeting that starts at 5:30 to see the progress they made internally and hear some of the ideas that they're putting up, uh, putting to the table. Uh, also, I want to congratulate or give an applause to DPS for getting those speed humps out. Uh, as I've been out knocking doors, a lot of residents say, hey, we, we definitely love those speed humps, we're glad they're there. But then also I re-talked to some residents and they say, hey, what about my neighborhood? Yep. So, um, I want to make sure that the, uh, the residents know I heard that. I will work to try to make sure your neighborhood get those speed humps as well. Uh, I also want to, uh, echo what, uh, Godbout said about other cities. I've had the privilege of going to other, uh, city council meetings, other city town halls, and one of the things that I hear over and over time is, we want to be like Wesleyan, we want to have these things like Wesleyan. Um, so, uh, I would like to say that Wesleyan, we're doing something right. It may not be perfect, um, but we're doing something right and people are taking notice. Also, uh, if you have, if you, you can reach me at 734-224-2747. You can call or text me anytime, any questions, any concerns, and I'll do what I can to help you. Uh, and you can follow me on Facebook at, uh, Councilwoman Delano Hornbuckle, uh, for more motivational and pick-me-up messages every day and things around the city. Nothing negative, it's all from the heart. So thank you and I appreciate, uh, everyone here.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, now we'll move on to Councilmember McDermott. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Council President Protem, and thank you for running and chairing the meeting tonight. You've done an outstanding job. I know that we made it a little difficult on you, so thank you for, uh, playing along with all of us in running the meeting. So fantastic job and thank you. Um, as was mentioned, and the mayor handed me a note and I want to just make reference to what the mayor mentioned, um, Don and Gail Nicholson lost their son Edward Nicholson. And if you were ever at a city event, whether it was Blues Brews and Barbecue, um, whether it was one of the civic days that we did out at Carrato Park, uh, whether it was one of the car shows that Don put on, you always saw Edward there with a smile on his face. And if anyone had a right to complain, if anyone had a right to feel bad or be negative, it was Edward Nicholson and he never, ever was. And he was always such a, a positive spirit for our community and such a light. So, uh, my thoughts, my prayers, my condolences certainly go out to Don and Gail and the entire Nicholson family. And as the mayor, uh, mentioned, or handed to me to, to mention, we are having a celebration of life here at City Hall. It's going to be on October 20th from 3:00 to 8:00 PM here at Wesleyan City Hall for Edward Nicholson. So thank you, Mayor, for, um, mentioning that. And, uh, if you can come here, it's again, on October 20th from 3:00 to 8:00 PM up here at City Hall to honor the memory and the legacy of Edward Nicholson. And I know without a doubt, it was clearly evident from Councilwoman Sampe's comments that he's, you know, touched her family and so many here in the community. So again, my thoughts and condolences go out to Don, Gail and the entire Nicholson family. And thank you, Mayor, for putting that celebration of life on. It's, it's very important. I also wanted to thank the mayor and the administration for, um, a survey you may have gotten in the mail the other day regarding DTE and hopefully some accountability, uh, regarding DTE. The survey states basically two questions, you can either go online and answer it or you can fill out the survey. What kind of power outages are you having? How prolonged are they and what's the cause of the outage in your neighborhood? Um, for a lot of us, it's tree branches that are getting knocked over on the lines because we don't have buried power lines here in the city. But I think it's high time that we've taken some action against DTE. It's something I've been, uh, you know, squawking about for quite some time here. Um, I would of course like to see us go further and, and start advocating for things like a public utility, but I'm glad that we're really having this conversation around DTE accountability. So thank you for that. I was pleased to see that we got the SAFER grant awarded here in the city. Um, couple of notes on that. This is really going to be the first time, I think, with the SAFER grant that we are not just trying to make up for a deficit in staffing. I think too often we've relied on the SAFER grant to try and catch us back up because we have fallen behind and not done a good enough job to have a proactive plan in place to make sure that our fire department is well-staffed. So this is actually going to be an in addition to not filling a void or filling a deficit. So I'm really excited at this $5 million grant. Uh, thank you to the chief, the administration, all the work that was done to, to get this grant. Thank you to the union, who I know was a big part of this as well, Local 1279. So thank you. I'm, I'm super excited that we have this and we owe it to you, the residents and the people in the community, to have a long-term plan in place to make sure that we can get these, uh, men and women, not just on a temporary SAFER grant, but actually permanent, full-time employees of the city of Wesleyan. I want to thank Councilman Godbout for stepping up to be the MML delegate, Councilwoman Sampe for being the alternate delegate. I know it went back and forth here tonight, but, uh, glad we were able to get that taken care of at the meeting as well. I want to thank, uh, our community police officer, Officer Marjorie Kelly, and also Jeff Capodra of the Wesleyan Police Department. Um, I had the chance to attend the Blue Smoke Wesleyan Police Community Partnership fundraiser. Uh, it was a tremendous event, it was very well-attended, as my colleague said, over 400 people there. Um, it was, uh, you know, really nice to see everybody come out and support, uh, that event. So thank you to Officer Capodra and Officer Kelly for putting on that event. And, uh, this was the inaugural Blue Smoke event that kind of transitioned to replace the TRU event, as, uh, our city clerk mentioned to me earlier before the meeting. So thank you to everybody that came out in support of that as well. I had the chance to attend a really terrific cultural event, the Native American Heritage Festival out at Heinz Park. That was, um, a couple of weekends ago. It's a really exciting event to honor Native and Indigenous peoples and their contributions and continued contributions, not only here in the city of Wesleyan, but across southeast Michigan and across metro Detroit. Um, I really hope that we can build on that and adopt a Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution to honor Native people on the second Monday of October. It is a federal holiday, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and it's what you typically think of as Columbus Day, but I think we need to go a step further and honor the sacrifices and the contributions of Native and Indigenous people and also acknowledge what we did to them. The plight, um, and the pillaging that unfortunately took place of Native and Indigenous people. So I think that's important that, uh, it's already a federal holiday on the second Monday in October, and I think we can go a step further to not only honor Columbus Day, but also honor Indigenous Peoples' Day, um, as well. I've got a lot here, so stick with me. Um, I do agree with my colleague, uh, we had talked about this prior to the meeting tonight about the marijuana ordinance. Um, there has been a change in state law that we're going to have to have our ordinance fit and adopt to in order for that micro-business to be able to open up. And I think that we need to have further discussion on the ordinance itself to look at potentially whether or not we want to have more retail licenses in the city of Wesleyan, given that we have one of our retail licenses that we issued north of Ford Road that has, uh, not been developing and has been delayed. And we have the one that you see out here on Ford Road, the Live Cannabis, who is developing. So I think that definitely warrants further discussion and it's, uh, something I would like to see as well. We had some questions and we've had questions in the past regarding the bidding process here in the city of Wesleyan. Thank you for bringing those questions up, Ms. Bowman and, and folks who've brought it up in the past. Uh, my colleague, Councilwoman Rakowski, and I have been working and I think we have, you know, pretty good consensus here on the council on doing what's called a responsible contractor ordinance. Uh, what that will do is make the bidding process more open, more transparent. It will take away a lot of the subjectivity and will provide a potential like bidding scoring sheet so that you all as residents know when we bid out, uh, your tax dollars for, um, when we send them out to bid for a contract, you have more transparency, more accountability, more objective scoring as far as why we're going with the vendor, not just looking at the lowest bidder, looking at the right bidder who pays their employees a living wage, who doesn't have any workplace safety violations, who has a good track record of doing good workmanship on a job as well. So adopting that responsible contractor ordinance, I think, will help us along in the bidding process to create a more open and transparent process, and I would certainly like to, uh, see that as well. I want to thank Director Barra, I know he left. Uh, thank Council President Protem Rakowski, Council President Hart. I know each and every year they work really hard with a team of people on the Veterans' Thanksgiving Day meals. Um, if you can donate, please go to CityofWesleyan.com, uh, fill out the form to give anything that you can, even if it's just a couple of bucks. It's a really expensive undertaking. Um, you know, when you're buying, you know, turkeys and full meals, Thanksgiving meals for over 392, um, veterans and their families, and with inflation now, it's a really expensive undertaking. So thank you to Vic, thank you to Council President Protem Rakowski. If you can give, if you can support it, uh, make a donation online. And if you know a veteran who's in need of a meal, you can also find the information there as well as, uh, Director Barra had mentioned earlier. Um, I want to, uh, thank Ray for, you know, always advocating for our people with different abilities and disabilities. And again, thank my colleague, Councilwoman Sampe, for bringing up that really important resolution. So thank you for bringing that to the table. Thank you, Ray, for always advocating, um, you know, acknowledging disability's awareness is crucially important and, uh, making sure that we treat people with equity, equality and respect here in our community, as Ray always says, respect is the key word, um, is, is really, uh, important. I'm glad to see that we're having a healthy conversation with MDOT Realty Group. I think we have to have an honest conversation about who MDOT is and what their business model is. So anything that we can do to move the mall in a new and different direction, uh, at least the part of the mall that they own, uh, I think is really productive and, uh, positive. Um, excited for the grant that we got from MDOT. That's great to hear as well for, um, for pedestrian safety. And then just, uh, two more things. Um, I want to spend, send a special shout out to our DPW Director, Ramsey Algarib. Um, I'm out there knocking doors quite a bit. So when I knock doors, I get a lot of ordinance issues, ordinance complaints and a lot of neighborhood service issues. Hey, I'd like to have my sidewalk replaced. Hey, there's a crack in my street. Hey, we want to have a tree removed. I send Ramsey a ton of emails, probably, you know, at least an email a week, sometimes two or three. So, uh, he's always super responsive, always does a great job following up, uh, not only with me, but, you know, with the residents as well. So I just want to thank Director Algarib because I know I bombard his inbox with a lot of emails from when I'm out knocking doors. And then, as always, yes, as always, if you need anything from me, I'm available on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott or on my personal cell phone number at 734-890-2146. Uh, I hope you all have a great week, hope we can get moving on some of these study session items that we've been talking and talking and talking about. And, uh, hope that you have the opportunity, if you want to vote beforehand, to vote with an absentee ballot and exercise your right to vote because democracy is not and will not survive as a spectator sport. It requires your active participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Well, I would like to start out with my comments with thanking Councilman Godbout for leading us in the pledge. I'd like to thank my colleagues for bearing with me in a very interesting and, and different meeting for me to chair. Uh, I apologize for, uh, you know, not being, um, as familiar with the nomination process as I would care to be. And I also appreciate your flexibility in allowing me to suspend the rules so that we could get through this process and make sure that we're represented at MML. Um, as the Chair, I felt it was, um, it falls on me to break a tie. Uh, I think either one of, uh, the council members would do a fantastic job. I'm going to lean on, um, the experience. Please go, please learn, please become part of that process and enjoy it. And it's supposed to be in a very fabulous area, but so lucky duckies to you too. Uh, to Ms. Bowman, um, it was purely an oversight and I, um, if you're willing to remind me with an email, I'll forward those to admin, um, so you can get those questions. Generally though, so that you're, just that little education portion, if something's on our consent calendar, uh, discussion doesn't really happen unless we move it off. So it would take a council member to move it off and to have discussion on that. But, um, certainly we can get some more information sent to you. Um, let's see, what else? I think everybody's basically covered everything. I do want to extend my condolences as well to the Nicholson family. Um, nope. Nope. Uh, yeah, you know, it, it's, it's been an evening, hasn't it? Uh, Edward loved Batman. He just loved Batman. And so I don't think I'm ever going to be able to see that logo and think of it the same. I think it's, he's our Batman. He was, um, if you, if you're a comic book guy or gal, sometimes it's, uh, he wasn't the hero we wanted, he was the hero we needed. And that's, uh, that's taken it to the Dark Knight side of Batman, but, uh, but, but, um, in honor of, of Edward, I, I welcome you all to be here the same bat time and the same bat channel in two weeks. And with that, can I have a motion for adjourn?